Man, these are loud tonight. I call this meeting the Tacoma Park City Council order. Clerk, please call and roll.
Mayor Williams.
I'm here.
Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Clay.
Here.
Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Simmons.
President.
Councilmember Snipper. Councilmember Schultz.
Okay, I know that Councilmember Snipper will not be here this evening. He's in El Salvador. And I'm gonna pause for just a second while I lower my microphone volume.
Reverse.
Reverse it very loud. It would be less loud if we were down.
Try it again. Okay, much better. Are there any council comments? Councilmember Clay.
I have a couple of comments. One is, I was wondering if the staff was gonna compile a set of responses to the questions that came up at Ward 2. And so then we should get some sense of what's happening with the patch at, I can't remember, it was 404 or 413, 404 Boyd Avenue. There's two of them now. So there's the one that opened up in the storm and then about three car lengths down from that is another one that is, I think, probably the one that's actually been repeatedly patched that she was talking about, because I didn't see that the one that opened up had been repeatedly patched, but that one's opening now. Two, so it's a twofer. And the other thing I want to ask about again is the cars, construction vehicles parking in the roadway in front of the fire department. So I'm still getting people that are complaining and the gist of the complaint is that, really the reason why they're calling and complaining is because they're unhappy about the sidewalk. It's illegal to park in the street, but what they're really unhappy about is that the sidewalk isn't there and they see the sidewalk being used for vehicular parking, even if it's just the area where the sidewalk used to be or where the sidewalk might be with some asphalt down on it. It's infuriating to them and they're letting me know about it frequently. That's all I have to say.
Interesting, because I'd observed that they weren't doing that anymore.
Apparently, they were there, there were three of them again today. I'm at work during the day, so.
They were delivering the drywall today. They had two trucks sitting there dropping the drywall in the front of the station. And that was the only truck sitting there that I saw, not their problem.
We have been having someone from the police department check the location on a daily basis. I know they have issued some tickets at times during the office of discretion. They will simply ask the party to move the vehicle and they do, but some tickets haven't issued.
Okay. So they're going by and asking. Okay, well, that's good.
Yeah, just 'cause today, anyway, it was a major construction zone. It was not a sidewalk or anything that appeared like a sidewalk or any place that anybody could park.
Maybe they should mark it off then also with cones or something when they're gonna be, like, on days when they're gonna be using it to drop off drywall. It's gonna be done soon, right?
Any question? Ward 1 has June 1st is supposed to turn it over to the county. And we're supposed to be able to occupy sometime between the middle of June and July.
Okay, so two months. I just wanted to replace the sidewalk.
Other council comments? Councilmember Wright?
Three things. One, I wanted to check in to see, I know we talked about having a time when we were gonna, I know you were gathering the learnings from the snowstorms that happened. I didn't know if that was gonna happen formally with the council, where we were gonna have an opportunity to talk about the learnings from that, things we thought went wrong. So we thought we'd do better.
The mayor has scheduled time on the April 5th agenda, I believe.
Great.
Yes.
The second thing is related to the storm. There are a fair number of right-ofways that were damaged in the storm. And I got clarification from Daryl today that they were definitely, of course, gonna address the right-ofways that are in front of the properties that the city maintains. For example, on Maple Avenue, Democratic and Republican votergarten. But it was unclear to me whether they were actually gonna also repair the right-ofways that were damaged in front of people's homes, which people are typically responsible for maintaining. But I think if the city damages them in the process of using a front end loader to remove snow, either by driving on them or scooping the dirt out, it seems like the city should probably at least restore them to something other than a mud pile. And the last item has to do with street sweeping. Also, Bruce and Fred might find this interesting, because we were talking about this on one of our drives through Annapolis. I found out that the city does have a schedule under which they sweep the streets. I found out my ward is typically Mondays and that they try and sweep the streets twice a month. So I'm definitely gonna put out something to people that says, try, if at all possible, not to park your cars in the street on Mondays, because that's likely when they'll be coming by with a street sweeper. So I think Daryl can supply other people with that information. But to all Ward 1 residents who are watching, so on Mondays from around this time until October, they'll be sweeping the streets and it's very helpful on Mondays if you park your car in your driveway or maybe just alternate putting your car on one side of the street or the other every other Monday. And that way, the street sweeper will have a clear path to sweep the streets. It does cause a problem when people are parked. They have to go around the car and actually have a pretty big chunk, often two to three car lengths of curb that does not get swept.
Thank you, Mayor. I think everyone in Tacoma Park has now received the census questionnaire and I would like to encourage everyone in the city, all residents of the city, to fill in the questionnaire and return it quickly. There are only about a half dozen questions on the form and it's important to each of us that those responses be turned in, because it means money to the city for programs that directly affect the residents of the city. In particular, apartment dwellers have been less responsive in filling in census questionnaires and so I would like to encourage all those who live in apartment buildings to pay particular attention to getting your census questionnaires turned in. If you have any problems or need any help with that, there's someone at the community center here at 7500 Maple Avenue who can answer your questions and assist you in filling in those forms. Thank you.
And following up on the census, just wanted to remind everybody that there's gonna be a census festival this coming Saturday, the 27th. And it goes to, I think, first Gaithersburg and then Wheaton and then ends in Tacoma Park. And the festival is from 12 to 4 at the Hampshire-Langley Shopping Center. And the caravan from the other locations should be arriving about 2 o'clock. A number of people will be there and a number of us on the council will be there as well. So there's a census festival this Saturday afternoon. I wanted to also make sure that everybody knows that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Piney Branch Elementary, the Piney Branch Elementary School Young Activist Club is sponsoring a forum with Senator Jamie Raskin, County Councilmember Valerie Irvin, about their desire to see the polystyrene lunch trays at the elementary school no longer used. And they proposed a pilot project. We signed on to that pilot project last June with a resolution and so we're hopeful that that will be able to happen and they'll be talking about that tomorrow night at 7 o'clock at Piney Branch Elementary. I just want to let folks also know that I'm having a meeting with the new state highway district engineer on Wednesday. The public works director and I will be meeting with him and going over a number of things, including Ethan Allen.
Thank you.
And so, any things that you want to make sure that we mention, if you can let me know, I'll add them to the list.
Is that gonna be a public meeting?
I don't think so, no. We're just meeting with him to, we haven't met him. It's introductions and presenting of some issues and talking about what's gonna happen with Ethan Allen at me.
Great.
And also, I just want to make sure that everybody's aware that the Senate Budget and Taxation Committee in Annapolis passed a proposed budget out committee to the floor of the Senate on Friday. And as part of that, they said not only would the highway user revenues be reduced by 90% as had been proposed in the governor's budget, but that it would stay permanently at that level for municipalities and counties. And so, I'm going to an emergency meeting of the municipal legislative committee on Wednesday, where we go meet for a short time and then all go with staves and pitchforks down to Annapolis and invade the Senate and let them know what we think of that. So if I thought that I wasn't gonna have any more legislative committee meetings in Annapolis, I was wrong. And that's all I've got. Councilmember Schultz.
Yes, I just wanted to respond to a meeting with the state highway engineer about the fact that during the snowstorm, some of the plows busted up, some of the new curb and gutter work that had been done by the current contractor who's paving, getting ready to repave New Hampshire Avenue. They had started, I guess, their curb and gutter work earlier last fall and are sort of moving south down towards Eastern Avenue. But unfortunately, some of the work that they did has literally just gotten broken up and needs to be repaired. I presume that they would come back and fix that, but in case they don't agree with my presumption, I'd like you to at least mention it to them.
We'll be sure to point that out.
Yeah, thanks. That's all I had to say.
All right. Just a quick scheduling update. I just wanted to remind everybody that there is no formal council meeting next week, but we're gonna have the, on Monday, the 29th, we're gonna have the, where did the flyer go? We now have a flyer, the listening session and discussion about alcoholic beverage laws in Tacoma Park. There's now a flyer with information that is available. It's also going out to all the listservs and it's got some background information. We have copies up here at the dais. That's from 7:30 to 9:00 in the atrium and in this room. And we're gonna have a roundtable discussion from 8 to 8:30. And the rest of the time, it's come in, mingle, ask questions, talk to people, let us know what you think. And as I pointed out before, I know that that's the beginning of the holiday and so there will be some people who won't be able to make it. This is by no means the only opportunity that we'll have for getting input on this and disseminating information, but I wanted to take the opportunity of the fifth Monday in the month, when we try not to meet and at least start that conversation, since if we're gonna do something, we need to go to the state legislature and know what we're gonna do by sometime midsummer. So just wanted to remind folks of that. And then the following Monday, April 5th, the city manager presents her proposed FY11 budget. And we get a budget overview and from there, we get into fairly heavy-duty budget discussions and work sessions and we start meeting twice a week, twice a week, adding Thursday sessions. And Monday, the 12th, there's a public hearing on the budget and the constant yield tax rate. And just as a reminder, there's a public hearing at the beginning of the budget process, a budget hearing at the end of the process, and also other opportunities for comment. And this is the time now for public comment. If anybody would like to come on anything not on the agenda or on anything that is on the consent agenda this evening, the only thing we'd like you to hold comments for those items are the regular meeting items that are not on the consent agenda. So if anybody wants to make any comment, if you could identify yourselves and please keep your comments to three minutes. And Pat, if you want to talk, we'll get the microphone over to you.
We're gonna bring it to the microphone.
Yep, it's coming.
Hey, Warren.
Go ahead, Pat.
Hello, my name's Pat Lovelace, 7620 Maple Avenue, Tacoma Park, Maryland, your favorite peace delegate. Just wanted to let you know that I'm sorry for disrupting the meeting last week when I got very, very sick and narrowly missed going to the hospital, but everything worked out fine and I'm feeling much better today. And I felt so good that yesterday I went down to the peace demonstration down on the mall. We had a peace demonstration in front of the White House down there with Cindy Sheehan and she even gave me a hug and a kiss. Yep, and I want to let people know that I've been feeling better lately. Sorry, I missed so many meetings because of, I had a pulmonary embolism bigger than a man's fist in my lungs. And then I developed stomach disorder afterwards and one before that. So I was in the hospital three times since I seen you guys last. And it feels good to be back out on the, with you people again. But one thing I want to ask you people is, is one thing is, is it possible to have like a phone line that people can call in on if they can't make it to the meeting or the public speak out if they can't make it there and they have something to say? Is it possible they could have like something for the call-ins to call in on?
I think that's a good idea, Pat, and something we can look into.
Yeah, that would be great. Also, also, I think what everybody who's out there watching tonight should be doing is getting people out there and registering them to vote and trying to do everything they can to work for peace. That's what this flag here stands for. It stands for peace, justice, and everything, everything good. And I think if you want to set a good example for your kids, raise them around peace. You want to set a good example for your teenagers, bring them down to the demonstrations, keep them out of gangs. No, that's one thing I've seen on TV more and more, just because the problem with gang violence. We've gotta do everything we can to put an end to that. And I think we can. We gotta start getting the kids young. We gotta start getting them interested in our city government. Maybe the parents who are out there watching tonight, if I can get out there in my condition and do it, there's no excuse why you people can't get out there and vote, get out there and take part in the city council and the city government. You know, we're gonna be having a new auditorium, new seats, and I'd like to see at least one seat, you know, in my lifetime, see them all filled. You know, because when I go, somebody's gonna have to take my place as a peace delegate, a peace activist. And thank you very much for letting me share. I'd like to pass on to everybody else to continue working for peace. And everybody in Tacoma Park, please, stand up and be counted. Vote with your feet as well as with your ballot. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you, Pat, and we're glad to see you back here. And we were sorry that you had some difficulties last week, but we're glad that you've recovered.
Yeah, it was a bad one I had last week, but it happens to the best of us.
Mm-hmm. Is there anybody else who'd like to make a public comment?
Hi, I'm Margaret Bowman. I live at 7509 Hancock. And I'm here speaking on behalf of Consent Agenda 5E, the single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for stormwater management facility installation adjacent to Hancock and Sherman Avenue. Nice simple title. I'm representing 54 residents of Hancock Avenue, Sherman Avenue, and Sheridan Avenue. I have a letter from all of them that I will hand you all after I speak. We have been working as a community to keep the property at the base of Hancock Avenue, which is city property, as well as the Obaldanal Park, clean from litter and from invasive plants. We have a cleanup at least once a year, if not twice a year. About a year ago, we sent a letter to the city asking if something could be done about the erosion problem at the end of the street. I was very pleased and impressed with the city's Public Works Department's responsiveness. They have designed a project to address the stormwater and erosion problems and designed it in a way that has real environmental benefits. So I have a letter in support of the project on the consent agenda from, as I said, 54 residents and several that I just got laid tonight. So that's a minimum of 54 in the community. And we think this is a good project, not only because it's gonna address the erosion problem, but it will slow down the water, address increased flooding downstream, it will increase the groundwater retention in the area, clean the pollutants out of the stormwater as it leaches through, and enable native plants to regrow there. So I hope you vote yes on the consent agenda. Thank you.
And thanks for your comments and thanks for all your hard work in helping to pull this together.
Thank you.
Kay Daniels Cohen, 19 Sherman Avenue, president, SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. I just want to ditto and underline everything that Margaret has said. I also want to thank her publicly for her taking a stand with the park. She's the one who's organized all the cleanups and all the care that's been taking, I mean, it's gotta be 10 years worth or more, right? At least twice a year, the whole community, the entire Sherman, Hancock, and Sheridan come out to help take care of the park. I just want to also request that you vote yes on this project going forward. There's been a great, great partnership between Daryl Braithwaite, the Natural Resources Design Group, and the residents of the community. And it's a beautiful plan that they have and it's really going to really, really solve some of the stormwater problems that are down there right now. So thank you very much. And I got out of here before the yellow light went on.
Hi, and I'm Carol Hutton of 101 Sheridan Avenue, and my property joins the proposed stormwater management area. And I definitely want to speak in support of the project. I think it's great. I think it's going to accomplish everything that Margaret said it will. And I wanted to thank Margaret, I want to thank Daryl Braithwaite and Ali Kalilian and all the other people who have been involved in this project. Again, I've been very impressed by the community and their willingness to be involved and the city's willing cooperation. But anyway, I do hope that you will vote in favor of this project. I think it will renovate what has been up to now an eyesore as well as a source of pollution and runoff. So I think this will greatly mitigate the problem. And thanks for listening me out. And again, I hope you vote yes. Thanks.
Anybody else? You forgot something, didn't you?
No, I didn't forget anything. Just another totally different subject.
Well, all right.
Start her from where she left off.
I am.
So here I am again.
Yellow light's coming, Kay.
Kay Daniels Cohen, president, SS Carroll Neighborhood Association. And you should have the memo in front of you. I apologize, there are two oopses on there. One, it's not Member Rubens, it's Member Snipper, sorry. And Barbara Matthews has two Ts, not one. I apologize, two hideous typos. But this is a commendation of the Public Works Department's response to our association during the winter of 2010. I would like to publicly commend the Public Works Department's handling of the three snow emergencies that our fair city experienced this winter. They always do an excellent job in every area within their domain. This winter, the job was over and above and beyond the call of duty and was truly appreciated. There were streets within our association that had trees down and those trees were removed and Daryl Braithwaite notified of their removal. There was a snowplow on the street, often within half an hour and certainly by the next day. Even when I suspect there were contractual personnel working the front end loaders and possibly just due to their not understanding our community, missing an offbeat street, speaking, mentioning Sheridan, when notified there was someone else there to plow the misplaced places. I don't think there are too many communities that can boast of such great care and quick response to every request. We really appreciate all the work that was done under Daryl Braithwaite's excellent leadership. We were thrilled to have the opportunity to pay it forward by responding to the requests for food for the road. We wish that we could have done more. Again, the citizenry of the SS Carroll Neighborhood truly appreciates and thanks the Public Works Director and Department for keeping us as safe as possible under some truly extraordinary circumstances. Their work didn't go unnoticed. And I, again, thank you all for everything that you do and for being our elected officials and for giving me the time to say that.
Thank you.
I'll be back.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you all. Now, city manager, have any comments?
Excuse me, Mayor.
Yes.
If I may. Barb, one of, I know that our police department in the past has advised us that it's critical that we get graffiti removed as quickly as possible. And I'm concerned that the graffiti that was reported on the front of the stores on Maple Avenue a couple of weeks ago has remained there. And I think maybe our code enforcement people need to talk with the owner there to get them to be a little faster on removing it. Thank you.
At this point, I'd like to welcome County Councilmember Mark Elrich. And we're always happy to schedule some time to talk with Mark. And I know that you wanted to be here, particularly now with the release of the county executive's proposed budget. And we look forward to hearing your thoughts about that and anything else. And I know we'll have some questions and I guess we'll try and keep this whole thing to about 45 minutes.
Okay. First of all, good to see everybody again in one place. Mr. Schultz, I haven't met you before.
Yes.
Nice to meet you. Many familiar faces there, in front of me and behind me, so it's sort of familiar.
And you're...
And the building is still a construction site, which is great. To which I will say, no comments. I'll talk a little bit about the budget and then mostly I think I want to take questions. I'm not bearing gifts or good news, so trying to set the tone appropriately here. We're really facing a pretty grim budget and the county executive's budget is about a, he's cut about 750, he's short about $750 million. Almost all of that's made up within the form of cuts or dipping into reserves. And there's a little bit of revenue generation, but the revenue generation is kind of trivial in the scheme of things. It's not enough to, it's not the big part of how we close this gap. So the big news, I guess, is it looks like that COLAs and STEPs aren't included for county employees, which is a really rough hit. And on top of that, we're looking at maybe 230 job losses. And then on top of that, for the regular county government employees, an additional 10 days of furlough. And all this is built into the budget and that's pretty substantial. It'll be a lot of pain for people. The tax rate and the, we'll not exceed the charter limits, we're gonna stay under the charter limit again.
Can you just briefly explain the charter limit?
It's, you know, adjustment for last year's taxes and I guess things adjusted by inflation. And we can't exceed what would give us a constant yield adjusted for, I guess, the inflation of those little things that we can't. I mean, I don't even, it's beyond the details at this point, much easier, I'm struck. But basically it means that people will get an increase based on what your assessments go up. Assessments are capped by the homestead credit for most people. So people won't be looking at enormous increases unless you've bought property. Things will go up modestly. We had a reassessment, the reassessment is down, but for a lot of people, down is still up. Because if you had, if you were reassessed in the last cycle, like say, somebody like me who had 130% increase in the last cycle, a 20%... 130% increase in the last cycle, a 20% decrease just means it'll be eight years till you reach your maximum, rather than reaching your maximum in 13 years or 12 years. So for a lot of people, they're going to wonder why their assessments went down and their taxes continue to go up, or the full value went down, not their assessment. Most people will still be experiencing a climb in their taxes. None of that's enough to get us out of the situation the county is in right now. So we're looking pretty much across the board, school budget that won't make maintenance of effort. So we will apparently be back in front, we are in front of the legislature now, looking to get an exemption for maintenance of effort for this year. It looks like we've got the maintenance of effort for last year. But for this year, we're going to need it as well. The state, the same budget report that came out told us that they were going to look, at least if the Senate version passes, they'll look at passing, beginning to pass a portion of the retiree cost onto the county, starting 2012, and phasing in, in the Senate version, it looks like over three or four years, which means we'll be getting a very big hit by the time we get to the end of three or four years. That'll be another unexpected tap on the county budget. At some point, we have to get back to paying gas bill and, you know, funding our future retiree obligations, but for this budget, we won't be doing that again. And we dipped into reserves, and we dipped into the rainy day fund. That's a lot of stuff. Major cuts to libraries, I think 23% cut to libraries, major cut to recreation programming, lesser cuts in police and fire. Public safety was held as harmless as you could hold it, but there are some reductions in equipment and in staffing and in training classes. So that's a serious problem. And parking planning is getting, I think, a 15% cut. So there's nothing going up. This is not a budget for anybody bringing in new ideas and big new programs. It's just not, it's just not happening. It's a restructuring threat. The county executives talked about this next year, looking seriously at more restructuring efforts. And they've got a series of suggestions, I guess, that will surface. Over the course of the next few months, looking at combining departments or taking some things that might be in one agency and moving them to another agency and trying to minimize the amount of supervisory overhead. But that's sort of the direction that we're going, and we were told all this with the caveat that next year is worse. And so that we will have, that all these cuts stay in place, and then next year, we'd be looking another $200, $250 million in additional cuts beyond where we are now. We'll do everything the same as we did this year, and then we get deeper next year. So it's not a really encouraging picture, I think, for anybody. And I don't know how the city budget is shaping up, but ours is really, really going to be challenging. That's sort of the, you know, the budgetary look of things. We start a budget hearings in the next couple of weeks. We seem to have achieved some level of peace with the school board in the sense that there's kind of a recognition that $137 million that Ike is recommending as a reduction is something that the school board's going to have to live with. And I find that very positive, productive sign, because the last thing we need to do is getting into an argument about resources that we don't have this year. This just drains a lot of energy, and at the end of the day, the dollar figure's going to be what the dollar figure is, and it's like, it would be a fight over, you know, not much of anything. So I'm very happy to see that, you know, I think we've worked out a pretty good relationship on this issue. I think what else is interesting and exciting around here?
Any bad news?
Any bad news? Not really. I think what's, you know, what's good news, one thing that I'm happy about is the study on the BRT system that I proposed. The Bus Rapid Transit Network actually went out to Parsons Minkoroff on Friday, and they had their kickoff meeting. And I think, you know, when this recession ends and when we get back into a building mode, pretty much everybody's identified the need to have transportation in place in order to be the backbone or service, means of being the backbone, to develop it as we go forward. And I think there's a lot of recognition in the business community, in environmental groups, pretty broadly accepted that we need to put a greater emphasis on transit, and we really have limited ways of enhancing transit. And because the state has said we can look at, you know, the median strips for putting in enhanced bus lanes, it really has made this thing possible, because if we had to acquire right-of-way, you know, widen roads and things like that, that would, this would be a financially impossible undertaking. But the ability to use median strips actually makes this a feasible thing for the county that they consider doing.
Does median strip mean the middle?
Yeah.
Okay. Just checking.
Yeah. And it would be primarily on the state highways. In fact, it would all be, I think, on the state highways at this point. What other good things are going on? Valerie kind of kicked off this Kennedy Cluster project, and people feel pretty good about that. It's sort of a breakthrough project in the sense of being able to share data between county government agencies and the school system, looking at providing comprehensive wraparound services for a population that needs additional services and letting us do a better job of coordinating services as opposed to, as it's kind of been where we don't always know all the resources that are available and who's doing what.
What's that?
It was called the Kennedy Cluster Project.
Kennedy Cluster.
And it was focused around the schools in the Kennedy Cluster. And that may prove to be a model for cooperation in other clusters in the county, because people do really feel that we're breaking down some of the silos between the school system and county government, and also private sector and nonprofit providers. And that, I think, I would count as a good thing. That's sort of like, that's what I'd leave you with at this point. I mean, we really, my office is trying to take the budget apart and figure out, is there anything that anybody missed? The executive's been accused of taking the low-hanging fruit, and I would expect an executive to take the low-hanging fruit. This isn't an exercise where he leaves things on the tree for the council to discover and then get brilliant credit for discovering things that were left on the tree. He had to bring in a balanced budget, and I expected him to take everything that he could take. And the budget depends on a $50 million, these are the revenue enhancements, primarily a $50 million energy tax. And the municipal officials have concerns about the energy tax hitting them on top of everything else, and how much easier it is for the county both to pay the tax and then get the money back in the county coffers in the form of the tax, and you guys don't have the luxury of doing that. So that's, that will be an issue that people are looking at. And the other revenue enhancement is looking at an ambulance fee. And continue, Ike has put the ambulance fee forward again as a means of raising about $14 million in revenue from collecting money from really insurance companies. And I'd be happy to talk about that if anybody has any questions or wants any illumination on where the executive's proposal is with that. That's the revenue enhancement side. So what would you like to know?
Is there anything more that you'd like to say about the county executive's kind of take? Yes, he maybe took the low-hanging fruit, but were there assumptions that he made that you think aren't necessarily going to hold up? I had the sense from when the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter met with you and a number of your colleagues last week, that you all were still reading the budget, but the sense was that his was the most optimistic take on the way things could break, and that you all were going to have to do some things that went beyond what he did.
Well, the two things that stand out are actually the two revenue enhancement measures. This requires a change in county policy, and it's not clear that there are the votes for either the energy tax and particularly the ambulance fee. And so if you don't have either of those, or if you don't have both of those, that's $64 million in additional cuts that you have to make, because basically there's no revenues to take worth the maximum of the income tax and worth the maximum of the property tax, unless you can get nine members of the council to override it, which would probably be close to impossible. So if you're not going to override the property tax and you're at the state limit on income tax, then there's virtually no place else to go for money. And I think that's largely what people were talking about in assumptions. There's a question about what the state will do in terms of final funding. You know, whether our assumptions about what's being put in the budget hold up three weeks from now remains to be seen. There's been some talk, you know, there are people who would, for example, put the teacher pension into this year and start having the county pay on it this year rather than waiting till next year. And if that changes, that's a hole we're not anticipating. If there are, you know, further decreases in funding for any other, you know, county programs, health and human services areas, for example, that if we were to say we wanted to maintain funding in the absence of state money, that would create another hole. So I think people are saying, let's wait to see what the state does and then what the temper is on the budget enhancements or the revenue enhancements.
And my assumption is if the Senate budget and tax version of the budget gets enacted and you all lose more highway user revenues in the out years, then things get, the budget that's worse next year gets even worse by some factor.
Yeah. I mean, we're pretty much, I mean, if this becomes permanent, another thing that was mentioned here is they're limiting the state spending on school increases to 1%, and they're freezing, I think, per pupil spending on community colleges and universities. So you're talking about, you know, major cuts there, and for us, if we look at a 1% increase, for example, in school funding, which will not cover inflation means anything that they were paying for before, we'll have to pick up the difference on if we want to maintain the same service level. We kind of like to have a maintenance of effort put on the state to ensure that the state maintains effort as much as they would like us to maintain effort. But I'm sure that's not coming.
Anything else about kind of the labor agreements and how you all are dealing with
The executive is talking with the unions. The, you know, working assumption has been no COLAs and no STEPs, but there's no agreement on that, and the unions have contracts. And if we were, you know, if we were to wind up funding STEPs and COLAs, then his budget is that much more out of balance, and we either need to make corresponding cuts, which most likely would be an increase in furloughs or reduction of jobs.
So it would be raises for some and no jobs for others.
And I will say that the unions all have different approaches, at least in my talking with people, that some people are more concerned about protecting jobs, some people want to focus on protecting STEPs, some people want to focus on protecting other benefits. And there may not be a uniform approach to this, and there's, you know, but I think there is uniform unhappiness with the way this thing is drifting right now.
I just got two more things, and I'll look to my colleagues for questions. One I just wanted to mention is in the parking planning budget, I think there are three proposed neighborhood studies in there, and the only one that's identified is for the Washington Adventist Hospital/Washington Adventist University area. And I think that's going to be real important. My sense is if three are identified and they're looking to cut some things, well, maybe there's the two unidentified ones that could be cut. But it would really be nice to keep that in there. My sense is it's supposed to take two years, and it's supposed to start July 1st. And you know a lot of the issues there, and it's your neighborhood, and I think you understand the importance. And if there's anything that you can do to share with your colleagues how important that is, that would be helpful.
I will share that, and then I'm also sure my colleagues will share with me the importance of these things that would be cut, if those are the things that are cut. I mean, it's one thing that, whether you're a large council member or from a district, I mean, this budget's got to have everybody's buy-in. And every time we come to the table, somebody's got an interest that's totally relevant to their district and is just as important to them as, you know, things are important to me. That's, you know, makes it frustrating, because there's a lot of stuff we could be doing and probably a lot of us think we should be doing, but to be in a really severely resource-constrained environment, it makes this incredibly difficult. It's why I'm, you know, I'm hoping that the next year, we move toward a real look at the structure of county government and eliminating duplication where there is duplication, because we have really got to focus to not be able to spend the money, focus dollars on things we need to do and not waste it on things that are being duplicated. My OLO project for this year, OLO is the Office of Legislative Oversight, and we give them projects to do at the beginning of every year to come back and report to us on the budget. What I asked them to look at was the housing services that are delivered through DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, Health and Human Services, and HOSA. And there's clearly some overlap between, if not the exact programs, targeted population in these departments. And, you know, I've raised the question of whether we would be better off having a single department that handles all housing-related service questions and then a separate place for housing production, which I do think is a distinct entity, rather than having three different agencies with, you know, corresponding bureaucracies and support staff. Even if they're doing slightly different things, it may make sense to bring them all in one house. That's the kind of structural stuff I think we really need to look at.
Which you've been pushing for for some time and haven't had much success at getting any of your colleagues to listen to it.
Yes, I have been pushing it for some time. I also, I took, Ike, when he first came in, he said that we're going to have constrained resources, and we need to look hard at what we're doing. And I took that really seriously, and I thought, and it is one of the times when you really wish you were wrong, or feel a lot better if our friends could say, you know, you were really wrong about this one. I really thought the recession was going to be deep and long. I didn't have any expectation this was going to be like a traditional, you know, you go through a two-year dip, then everybody comes out smiling, and then there's this robust happy recovery followed by a little dip, and then another robust happy recovery. I thought it was really going to be problematic, and it's proven to be pretty bad. And not at all, you know, we're used to, let's cut this 5% this year, you know, and we'll get it back next year. Well, it's 5% at the beginning of the year, and it's like, can you shave off another 3% in November? And by the way, can you shave off another 5% in January and then prepare your next budget for a 7% to 15% cut below where you are now? Couple of cycles of that, and that's really severe.
And the final thing I would just want to talk about for a minute, and I've got, I typed up some stuff, and I gave copies up here. I have a copy for you, and maybe somebody would take that around to him, just so you've got some, the cheat sheet. And it's the topic that I brought up last Thursday night.
Is that to do with, like, big red trucks?
Yes. And first off, I'll say, the information I have now is possibly a little better than what I had last week, because the sense last week was that Truck 2 was not going to be returning to Tacoma Park Station. The sense now is that, at least as things stand now, until somebody says differently, it is supposed to return when the new station opens, which is supposed to be right around July 1. There's a couple corrections to this, and I'll make them and send you an electronic copy, but it charts out where the trucks are now, where they're proposed to go to. It talks, and it kind of talks about the fact that right now, Truck 2, which is the one that we really care about, is being used as a reserve truck. And Truck 1 is at Station 1, that's the one that the volunteers bought. It's being staffed with the career folks that would go with Truck 2 over here July 1, and then Truck 1 would be staffed by volunteers next year, because Fire Service is looking to eliminate 22 positions. And those would go with Truck 12 going out of service and the ambulance at Hyattstown going out of service. But then the county is supposed to reopen two new stations at some point next year. And where's the staffing from those going to come from? And then what happens in the out years, they may start shifting stuff around, and they may want to take Truck 2 to Truck 16, to Station 16, and so that's kind of laid out there a little bit. A little bit more information on the Prince George's service levels close by, I lay out what's happening with Stations 1, 34, and 44, and how they are staffed or not staffed, and when. And the fact that in Prince George's County, I think you've just generally staffed the station, and if a vehicle goes out and takes the four people with it, then that's it, there's nobody left for the other vehicles. So if an engine is out and you need a truck, there's nobody there to take it out on a call. So the level of service coming from Prince George's into here is fairly non- So the level of service coming from Prince George's into here is fairly non-existent and the level of service from the county fire and rescue over into Prince George's down here is a lot heavier than it used to be. My understanding is also that that's somewhat balanced by Prince George's 31 and 41 running over into Montgomery County, over into the first area for 15 up near Burtonsville that kind of in some ways balances that out, so it's not all just a one-way street. And I gave you the copy of where the stations are, which kind of makes it a little bit easier to see and if any of my colleagues up here want to see that, this is the map of where the stations are. I saw a hand move, you get it. And on the second page of this, I lay out locations of where the stations are because people see numbers and then it's like, where is this station? So I just wanted to provide a little information because I had brought that up last week that we were in danger of not seeing the truck return here. And I know you understand the issues and you were surprised when I said that. It may not be as bad as it seemed. On the other hand, something could change and we could go there very quickly and if we don't go there July 1, we may go there not too long after that. Yeah. So, any thoughts on fire and rescue service and how you're going to deal with new stations that you don't have people for and how all this plays out?
I talked to Chief Perez specifically about this and was told that it is not as bad as the scenario was you had thought it was going to be and so I'm glad that they seem to be moving in the right direction. I'm concerned because it's one thing to have mutual aid and, you know, the situation in Burtonsville is a mutual aid situation. We've actually identified the need for another station as part of the county, but moreover, it's, you know, people are backing each other up. My concern with what's happened down here is the closing of stations and the assumption that, you know, we are going to be the fire service and I find that sort of unacceptable. That's not mutual aid, that's saying, I'm not doing it. We expect Montgomery County to provide the aid on that side and that, that's a problem. And then the loss of this truck, I thought, kind of amplified the problem. So I'm, you know, very supportive of this, I'm on the Public Safety Committee, I'm going to continue to push hard on this. I think, you know, the magnitude of the problem, when we open five stations, we, it's like 33 full-time personnel a station. So you look at 165 people added to the fire department and, and one reason I support the ambulance fee is that this is a source of money that can help us fund the expansion of the service in Montgomery County. This is absolutely going, going to expand, it's going to require more equipment and people and we need, we need to be able to meet that. I'll also say that I, you know, I've been talking with some people about going back to a separate fire tax. That's not under the property tax cap the way it is right now.
Because everything goes into the general fund?
Because what happens is, you know, if I decide I need to add all these firefighters for, you know, public safety reasons, that competes against everything else in the general fund. And that's where you wind up with, well, can I delay four-person staffing, you know, can I get one station to cover another station?
Which is what's been happening for decades.
And I have a problem with that. I, you know, I really think that, you know, we ought to think about taking the fire tax out, back out from under that cap. I don't like the cap to begin with, I think it's the wrong way to control government. If people are spending too much money, you should not elect them, but you shouldn't put an artificial cap on things. This is a real problem for the fire service and it just puts them up against everything else and we wind up, anybody who's sent through our hearings up there, you know, you're trading this off against everything else. You know, how do you have an adequate number of people in the new fire classes to fill the positions that are being emptied plus the number of new positions that are being created by the new stations? And that's, I think, a real, this can be a short-term problem, I like to say long-term problem, but I think it's going to create real pressures on the budget that I'll not to be there. And a separate fire tax would allow us to meet the public safety needs. And I think, I really believe that most residents in the county would not quibble one bit if you said this is the amount of tax money we need in order to provide fully-staffed stations and the equipment we need. And I don't think most people understand the conflict that's created when this is pitted against, for example, schools or pitted against police inside the general budget. So I think there's an argument for taking it outside the general budget. And I'm going to continue to see if I can get enough people interested in taking a look at that because otherwise I think we're, it's, it's just going to create intolerable pressures on the county budget in the coming years.
And you've turned around and looked, I'll just make sure everybody knows that the president of the corporation and the operations chief of the Station 2 are both here this evening and they know how important these issues are.
And this is why I wish the volunteers were more sympathetic to the, to the insurance, I often say it's called an ambulance fee, the insurance recovery fee, because this is really what we're doing. We're, you know, the county executive's proposal is not to so much create an ambulance fee as to collect money from everybody who's got insurance that already provides ambulance coverage. And even though, for example, even though, even though every employee in Montgomery County knows that if you live in Montgomery County, there's no fee, everybody's insurance policy has an ambulance fee, ambulance fee provision, because if you get sick in Prince George's or, you know, the District or Virginia, you're going to pay an ambulance fee. And so the insurance is already covering ambulance fees for everybody because you're not going to say, you can't guarantee where the insured is going to get sick, they're only going to get sick in our appropriate jurisdictions, you have to assume you can get sick anywhere. So I don't view this as, you know, I don't view this as tapping in or going to cause insurance companies to suddenly provide a coverage that are already covering. The executive's proposal also modeled on, I forget what city it was in, it was in the Midwest, uses the tax, uses the money paid by taxpayers as the deductible. And it basically informs the insurance companies that, you know, this person's deductible has been paid through their taxes and therefore, you know, we're only billing you for the portion not covered by the deductible, so that no bill goes to a resident saying, we paid this, now you have to pay your deductible. And the executives also, you know, agreed that if an insurance company rejects a claim, there would be no effort to collect from, you know, a resident. And I just think they've done everything possible to address every concern anybody's ever raised and they're, you know, more and more departments are going to be collecting ambulance fees and there's absolutely no evidence, now there's this, you know, no evidence that people will not call an ambulance. There's anecdotal stuff where people say, I'm worried about the cost. Anybody's worried about the cost of going to an emergency room, the ambulance will be the least expensive thing on your bill to the emergency room. So if people are afraid of going to an emergency room, the emergency room is the one that's really going to take people to the cleaners. And if you don't have insurance under the executive's plan, you also don't pay any fee anyway. And they don't done you, they ask you when you ride in the ambulance, they have to take down all this information, the hospital takes down all this information, it goes down electronically, they say, do you have insurance or not? If you don't have insurance, that's the end of the story. So I think it's a reasonable thing to do and I wish that, you know, the volunteers would look at this holistically and look at the situation we're in in terms of providing funding and support this, at least until such time as we can create a separate tax and, you know, which would be another way of dealing with this.
And hopefully people without insurance will be fewer once the president signs the bill tomorrow.
That's true. That would vastly improve it.
Questions, observations, ask more, Robinson?
Hi, thanks for coming.
Hi.
Nothing too pointed here, the retiree cuts by the state, is that, did you say that's for the school system only at this point? Or is that also for county?
It's, the schools are the biggest piece of it. I think, you know, we've talked about it as the teacher pension, because that's the one that the county blames us most, I mean, the state blames us most for it because we set the pension and we set the salaries and the state feels they have no control over it.
The special tax you mentioned on fire or, and the energy tax, I'm assuming we can't use any special taxes for our city, is that correct?
State doesn't give us the authority.
You have whatever authorities you've got, you know, through the state.
So we can't, we can't impose an energy tax, we can't impose a, any other, any other Park and planning is getting a 15% cut. We have a CIP project coming up at Tacoma Piney Branch Park. I don't know when, I think that's slated to start this spring, am I right?
Yeah.
Is there, will that cut have any impact on?
It shouldn't, no. We were much kinder on the CIP items because the assumption is that it's cheaper to build right now because construction prices are down and so we're trying to take advantage of that.
I heard some rumor that, I mean, speaking of consolidating departments, there's, there's a county planning department, as I understand it, and then there's Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission, so that's two planning entities in the county. Has there been any discussion of consolidating their, their efforts?
Maryland National Capital Park and Planning Commission is a state-created entity and the authority for zoning resides with them, but there are a bunch of functions within that that don't necessarily have to be contained within Park and Planning Department. For example, we could take Park Police Movement, County Police, which would then eliminate the command structure, create a parks division so people, you know, covered the parks, but then it would allow all the other county police, which cross these parks all day long or never go into them because it's not their jurisdiction, to go in and cover the parks. That's one possibility. We have a call, they have a call center, we have a call center, we could have a unified call center. We do vehicle maintenance, they do vehicle maintenance, we could have a central maintenance depot. We do building maintenance, they do building maintenance.
For all of, for all of these things, Mark, whose decision is that?
It would come over as a recommendation from the executive and.
And go to the state?
No, this is, well, this is where things get a little bit questionable.
Because Park and Planning.
They're trying to figure, they're trying to figure out what things, what operations inside the department could be moved to the county without requiring state legislation versus what things would require state legislation to move. And so if it's something that we could simply say, we're not funding this vehicle maintenance operation, you know, you zero it out on the budget side, but you put in some increase on the county side to provide capacity, that may be something we can do. But these are things we're looking for the executive to bring forward, to really look at the relationship between both of us.
Okay, thanks. And my last question is, I brought this up with your council president Florine last time she was here, was it two weeks ago or last week? I can't figure it out.
I think it was the first, so three weeks.
Three weeks ago.
Right after you all met on Gaithersburg West, she came down.
Yeah, she came down, I see. And I asked her, she presented us with the brand spanking new and fresh county budget from the county exec, which was obviously grim.
Yeah.
And we looked it over, I didn't see any place in there that, where cities were mentioned or any, and I'm, I've been thinking about this, where are cities in county documents? I know that, I mean, you hold a certain sway over us, there are certain, there's a certain place we have in our relationship with the county and yet every county document I've seen, there's nothing about the cities. And, you know, my, my, you know, my opinion is that we subsidize, we taxpayers in Tacoma Park subsidize to some extent the taxpayers in the county because we pay into your coffers and then not all that money comes back. So I've not seen that figure, you know, I don't really expect the county to come up with that figure, but there are, I know, a lot of other numbers floating around out there that have to do with cities since we represent 15% of the population and a goodly amount of governance. So I'm just putting this out as a general notion for you, that I'd like to see cities reflected in county documents in one way or another. And I, and with council president Florine, I also asked what the relationship in general was between cities and the county and she kind of waxed on about how, well, there are many kinds of other entities in, besides the county. You've got your cities and your special taxing districts and your urban areas and so that's all fine and good, I just, I come back to my initial kind of question or request and that is to tell, tell us how, where we're reflected, where our realities as a city are reflected in county documents.
And you pretty much sit in that one little teeny piece of the document where it talks about municipal rebate.
Yeah, but there's more to us than just how much you give us back for the services.
But in terms of county, I mean, in terms of county government, it's not broken down that way. It's either, you know, you're either absorbed and under the title citizen, you know, and then everybody here is a county citizen or you wouldn't get treated any differently if you were a Tacoma Park citizen versus a non-Tacoma Park citizen. So, I mean, I think the county doesn't look at, you know, special treatment or what we do for people in a city abstracted from what we do for people in the county, for people in the county in general.
Well, now, luckily, the Supreme Court has said that corporations have, have status as a, as a citizen or as a.
It's like, did you win extra votes as the municipal?
So as a, as a corporate entity here in Tacoma Park, I mean, you know, maybe we, maybe the county can look at us as an entity and not just as a collection of citizens who are unfranchised because we are unfranchised.
We've had a very interesting discussion with Gaithersburg and Rockville, who are, I would say, between furious and extremely angry.
Yes.
Over the Gaithersburg West master plan.
Yes, where you're expected, you're expecting to develop a goodly number of housing and certain retail and so forth between Gaithersburg and Rockville and it will impact those two municipalities substantially, they say, and they're not seeing the kind of planning on this county's part to take that into consideration. Did I say that more or less?
Yeah, I mean, they carved out this little tiny area that's almost devoid of people who live in any place, if they're unincorporated or incorporated, did their plan around that and kind of excluded the neighboring jurisdictions from consideration and they've got, you know, they have interest in this. I mean, the decisions we make may make it impossible, for example, Gaithersburg, as you said, for them to realize development potential in some of the sites, you know, that they'd like to see developed inside the city. There is, was virtually no articulation between this plan and Rockville and Gaithersburg in terms of how, how they relate, how they interact, how this would ever interact as a center for the other jurisdictions. So they are really upset and I pretty much agree with them. But, you know, the reversal of that, and I raised this with them, I raised this at the meeting we had, was that if we're all going to play together, then we have to start playing together all the time and that includes annexations. Because, you know, a lot of times people go to a jurisdiction to get annexed in order to get something from the jurisdiction they couldn't get from the county. And so if the jurisdiction says, okay, we're going to do the annexation and allow all these housing units and if the county doesn't have the capital, provide the schools for the housing units, or they send a bunch of people off on roads that are now responsible for building, expanding, or the state is responsible for building and expanding, this creates some tension in the opposite direction. So I was kind of hoping that this would be the beginning of a mutual dialogue where we all realize that what we do affects each other and that we commit ourselves to kind of working together in a way where, you know, on all these issues, we say, how's this affect you and how does what you do affect us and how do we come out of this in a healthier way?
Yeah, well, those are great comments. I have one actually, one tiny one, I know I'm asking a lot here. I just want to bring up Sligo Park Hills, who has a little sliver near where you live between, it's the part that kind of carves down and they are requesting the county, they've requested and received from the county a report about traffic through their neighborhoods and the county is, the city exec is coming up with a recommendation, I guess, on whether to allow them to close off their streets so that you can't get in during rush hour. And I know my constituents are concerned that that will push traffic then over to Ritchie and then Ritchie has responded by saying, you know, hey, we'll close our streets off too. And then what that would end up with is a mile-long stretch where you can't get through and, and my concern, my constituents' concern also is that the county didn't, didn't take us into consideration there. So it's another one of these same instances and I don't want to belabor it, but I just want to put that out there for you.
I thought there were problems with the traffic study too, in terms of who they counted in the study and what assumptions they made about behavior of people within a half mile, but so, I'm aware of this.
Okay, thank you.
My neighbors have talked to me.
And I think maybe council member Schultz had a question?
No.
Somebody, somebody down there did. About tax duplication, about the county exec has proposed a 5% cut.
Yeah, yeah.
Whether, whether you think, I believe the term used at the meeting last week was a haircut.
Right.
Whether, whether there's going to be any potential for further reduction there or not and.
Look, I mean, there's, there's potential, I mean, for, for all kinds of stuff, if we don't pass the ambulance fee, there will be $14 million in additional cuts unless somebody has another way of getting money into the budget. So I don't want to say, you know, absolutely never, this can't possibly happen, but I think people, I mean, my. think people, my approach to Ike's budget was, hard enough to get where it got, and it's balanced, I'd be happy to see this thing go forward, you know, for the year, and then take the next year to really plan, you know, an organized way of restructuring things. I'm not looking for increasing percentage cuts, and no one has talked, I haven't heard anybody start suggesting things that they want to do in addition to what's in Ike's budget. So it may only be a haircut. I really think that, you know, that report has to come out.
They're making the cut without the report, that's really classic.
Well, I mean, the good part was, they, you know, they're not arbitrarily changing the formulas, so, right, so the formulas are still theoretically in play, and I hope that we do have a discussion, because I do share with you, as a former municipal official who looked at this stuff as you do, is that, you know, I think it would cost the county more to do what the city does than the amount of money that the county gives the city to do it. And I think we would be hard-pressed, or the county would be hard-pressed to demonstrate that it would save money if the cities went away, unless we're to diminish services throughout the county.
And if that's really the case, then that's such a strong argument for allowing cities to do more, isn't it? If you could, if the cities can do more.
Oh, yeah, I think cities pick and choose what they do, and not all cities could afford to do the same thing. I mean, we get into this argument that you, we went over with the Southern jurisdiction that wanted to incorporate, that turned into a very ugly and unpleasant discussion. But it's not always the case that you can do it for less. Some things, yes.
And you might want to move your foot, you're trying to pull that microphone off the table.
And that would be bad.
And I think my colleagues over here have some questions. Councilmember Stevens?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for coming, sharing your time with us today. I know that things are tough, as you said, money-wise, but at the same time, as you know, difficult economic times can be an even greater hardship on some of our lower-income community members. And right now, housing is especially a difficult issue. There seems to be a undersupply of housing, especially for low-income community members. I just wondered if you could talk about that a little, and I know that I heard you on the radio the other day that you had some proposals for that.
We had a tenant task force, Montgomery County Executive, put together at my request. We had originally had an affordable housing task force, which was mostly bankers, developers, and not people who need affordable housing. And I thought we ought to have one that actually involves people who need affordable housing. And they came back with a set of recommendations, and, you know, a lot of them don't have a monetary cost to housing providers or to any county government, but the big recommendation they came back with was some form of rent stabilization in the county. But I'm pretty certain that I still can't get a second for that if I raise it, and that there are people who, you know, one minute we've got this affordable housing crisis, but then when you say we need to do rent stabilization, the argument is, well, no one's demonstrating there's a need for affordable housing. And I just, I find the arguments fascinating.
So if you can't get a second, that means you can't get the vote.
No, and a vote would be pointless, because if I got a second, that means we'd die seven to two. I'm really frustrated, because, you know, we, I'll give you an example, in the Gaithersburg Plan, they did an analysis of the Gaithersburg Plan by the county executive, 10,000 jobs that they proposed to create will make, will pay $31,000 or less, maybe 32 or less. That doesn't even get you into an MP to use. And you've got to ask yourself, you know, if you're creating these many jobs at that wage level, where do you expect these people to live?
This is for the Gaithersburg West project?
Yeah, because, you know, along with all the high-end science, there's, actually, academia, the average wage in the academic part's really low, because of all the grad students and all the, you know, lab tech doesn't pay very well either. And all the retail jobs, the retail jobs, the average pay for retail jobs is about $23,000 a year. So as we blanket the county with these livable, walkable communities, with the ground-floor retail from end to end, every time you look at that, just, you look at an employee, think someone who can't afford to live in Montgomery County now or any time soon.
Then you've got a traffic problem.
And you've got a traffic, that creates a traffic problem. So I'm kind of frustrated by this discussion, and if you don't want to do this, I mean, the options are really, really expensive. If you're going to start subsidizing and buying down affordable units, that's going to cost you a fortune. And developers find it very hard, you know, in their buildings to get more than, you know, 12% MP to use. They thought building workforce housing in high rises was impossible, because the cost of building high rises is so high, and the actual construction costs are so high. So I'm not quite sure what we're going to do, and I'm not sure we'll actually deal with it until the employers realize that they can't get employees. I mean, at some point, you're going to wind up in a situation where people just can't get here, or they can't get here within an hour or two, and they're going to be looking for jobs anyplace but here, because why come all the way here for a job that doesn't pay any better than a job closer to where you are?
Then the employers will move out of town.
Yeah, we've got, I think we've got a long-term problem, and I think we've got to think about it, and maybe we have to do some things different than we've done completely before. But I'm not sure how we're going to get out of this conundrum. I thought, you know, the rent stabilization, at least let us take, you know, the block of housing that's affordable and maintain its affordability. And if you tried to do that another way, if you let it go to market and then tried to subsidize it back down to affordability, the county would vastly exceed whatever it's spending on affordable housing programs. The other thing I noted, when I got elected, there were 8,000 housing units on the block for condo conversion, and the market has kind of delayed that now. But if you think that the county in a good year produces about 400 MP to use, that means it would take 20 years of MP to use to replace the 8,000 units that were on the block for conversion. And, you know, what do you do with that? So I think we've got some real challenges. I don't think people have their head around it yet, and at some point, it'll hit, and hopefully, people will figure out something to do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Wright?
Interesting, we were talking about rebates and then affordable housing and the rent stabilization, because I think, you know, that's something we don't get rebated at all for, and we end up paying a big chunk, I mean, we end up providing a big chunk of affordable housing through our policy, and it does cost the city something to do that. And the county doesn't rebate us, that's another discussion, but I'll just point that out. I had a question about, I think, something you floated out there and have, I think, think we should look at, which is having differences between commercial and residential tax rates. And so I just wanted to hear, that seems like to me a potential long-term solution to some of the revenue side of the equation. So I want to, you know, it's not something that's going to happen this year, but I just wanted to hear your perspective on that.
Well, you know, Alkar put a bill up a year ago that would have allowed for the county to set a differential rate on commercial and residential property, and I happen to think it's a good idea. Northern Virginia actually has a differential on commercial and residential. It's, I think Arlington, or is it 11 cents? They're allowed to go between, I think, 10 and 20 cents over the residential rate. Their caveat is all the money gets spent on transportation projects. If we did that here, this would be a major step forward, because if we could unbottle transportation and get some capacity provided on the ground, it would stimulate more economic development, which would trigger more revenue for the county. So, you know, if we can, and there's a bill by Rich Manalino, and right now, that will let the county create transit taxing districts that are exempt from the property tax cap, so you could do just this. If White Flint developers and the Rockville corridor wanted to put a, you know, say, a VRT line up to Pike, then you could create a transit taxing district, and then tax the development in the Pike, or the, you know, commercial property in the Pike, to pay for that, over a long period of years, which is a lot cheaper than asking people for a bag of money upfront. I mean, developers are a lot more willing to pay for the capital cost if it's extended over a long period of time than if they're asked to bring, to bring all the money to the table in one lump sum. So I like the differential, because I think it gives us flexibility. And, you know, when I was on the council here, I suggested that we, you know, look into doing it at the council level, because you could do this at this level, and set a differential rate on residential and commercial property. I think we actually, the county, the city had more authority in this regard than the state did, which was, than the county did, which is really intriguing, one of those rare places where you had something we didn't have. But I think it'd be a useful tool to have.
And what do you think the likelihood of that getting passed, or is it?
I think that, I think if there's a differential tied to transportation, that actually has a shot, because, first of all, everybody knows the state's broke, that's a given. And the county doesn't have the kind of money to finance major transportation projects. And so if the development community wants to see the infrastructure built, they're going to have to play more of a role in its construction than they've paid in the past. And we, I know from talking to the state, that they're more interested in transportation projects with their public-private partnerships, where they feel if the state puts in money and the development community puts in money, then they feel that we're both making investments in this. So I think that we may be able to get some movement along those lines. And if we could do that, that would also take some pressure off the general tax, general tax rolls to provide for this kind of expansion. So I think we may get, may be able to get some of this, and I think people are warming to the idea, and if their, if our competitors, I don't actually like to think of it that way, but in the vernacular of the day, if our competitors in Northern Virginia are taxing the business community with this extra tax, it would behoove us to be competitive with them to do the same.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
It's always an interesting conversation.
And you are always welcome, you know, to visit me, to contact my office, ask for help. I can't always succeed, but I'll try. And thank you for having me today.
Thanks.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We'll take a short break. And we've got the second reading ordinance awarding general obligation bond financing for state retirement and pension system of the Maryland deficit. We had a first reading of this, let me get back to the item. Had a first reading of this, I think, last week, two weeks ago.
Yep.
And we talked about it a good bit then. I hopefully everybody understands it. Does somebody want to move it?
Move the ordinance.
I'll sign it.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Schultz. Are there any council comments on this second reading ordinance? Is there any public comment on this second reading ordinance? Okay, will clerk please call it all?
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Councilmember Wright? Councilmember Clay?
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson?
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens?
Aye.
Councilmember Sniffer?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. We now have a first reading ordinance mandating a stormwater management code. Would somebody like to introduce that one?
Move the ordinance.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, there's second.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Robinson. Public Works Director is here, he wants to say a few words about this one.
Sure. There's several issues involved or intertwined with this issue that we can discuss tonight. The first, of course, is a change that the state made to the stormwater management statewide regulations that came into effect in 2009, mandating that all jurisdictions have had stormwater management authority, revise their regulations. They drafted model ordinances to that effect, and the ordinance is to be in effect by May 4th of 2010. With our previous work session discussion, we presented to the council what we had developed up to that point. The draft that we presented pretty much reflected use of the state's model ordinance, which we've done in the past, and our stormwater code is not quite a verbatim, but very close to verbatim reproduction of the state's recommended model ordinance for stormwater, with a few unique tweaks that the city has added to make it uniquely ours, one of which being that any commercial, industrial, or institutional development goes through stormwater permitting, regardless of the size, regardless of lot coverage. Anytime you're doing one of those projects in the city, it goes through stormwater permitting process. So in the meantime, since the state passed those regulations, there was a recent issue developing throughout the state, and particularly certain jurisdictions and agencies like MML and MACO that were concerned about some of the details within the regulations themselves. My last hearing was that they agreed to, they mediated it, worked it out, developed some tweaks to the language. We got copies of voluminous records on that, as well as regulatory language that jurisdictions could then choose to adopt. I censored through the mayor that there may be some unease, or the boat may be rocking, and it might not be that case. We've asked our city lobbyists, we haven't gotten any information back. We haven't heard from the state that there's anything changing. But city staff has reviewed those amendments to the regulations that were made as part of that modification or appeasement to folks that were concerned about the impact on development, in particular, in some specific areas. We don't feel that there's a need to adjust what we, the city currently has on the table as a result of those modifications. They focused on three areas. One was grandfathering, which is important if you have some major mega developments taking multi-years to develop, and the requirements make you go through a step-by-step. First, you get a plan approval, then you get your secondary phase of permit, then you get your final permit. For a large development, multi-lot, multi-block development, that could take years, we don't have that type of development in the city of Tacoma Park. We've got two outstanding permit applications that have gone through concept approval. We fully anticipate they will get their final permits before May 4th, so we are not in a situation where grandfathering is a concern that we have. The other issue is related to language for variances and waivers, and we feel that the ordinance is drafted, we have enough flexibility to work out waivers or variances if there'd be a need for that. So there wasn't a concern about further language or flexibility. We felt like the existing model code ordinance gives the city engineer, as the city's representative, sufficient flexibility, and we are sort of focused on trying to make sure developers to the point they can maximize the requirements of the law and the use of the design manual and state. The most unique parts of this regulation is that they require that you use environmental site design before you do anything structural. So basically, you're focused on controlling stormwater, managing stormwater, capturing stormwater, before you put in any pipes, or structures, or channels, to get it away from your property and down to the creek. Some of the other concepts in the language that are changed from the past is, in the past, if you were redeveloping a site, you had to deal with reducing 20% of the imperviousness of the site. That has now been increased to 50%. And those, some of the major changes from the old law to the proposed and new law. The last piece we have is a recent recommendation through the Task Force on Environmental Action. There's Stormwater Subcommittee that had a chance to first look, of course, at the model ordinance, the existing city code, and then as soon as we were finalized with the proposed changes, we sent that to them as well. I was trying to remember back what was going on, and that was mid-storm. You know, January 29th, we got our approved draft from the city attorney, and then that's sort of when we lost two weeks, and then picked it back up again, and we provided those before the fourth session discussion to the Task Force members. So I'd be happy to talk about those, you know, specifics, if the council wants to get into that level of detail. I could also go through the code to sort of identify those areas that are new or different from the past, just depends on how you'd like to proceed from here.
Does anybody have any questions? Okay, we're on.
Just two small things. You mentioned 20%, 50%. What was that context? I didn't quite catch it.
That was for, if you're redeveloping an existing lot, the previous code requirement was that you had to reduce the existing imperviousness by 20%.
Okay.
The new requirement is that you have to reduce existing imperviousness by 50%, or you have to treat the equivalent of 50% of the stormwater generated from your site as a result of your imperviousness. So it's just a higher level of-
And do you have to do that onsite?
There is definitely a preference for onsite. Again, when you get into the waiver, the variances, they do allow for off-site remediation, but it's only after you've proven that you can't manage anything onsite, you're maxed out, you can't do it, you're going to be unable to. And then there's sort of a hierarchy of controls, you know, ideally, you want to get infiltration onsite in environmental site design to the maximum extent practicable. And if you can't achieve that, then there's a whole series of additional measures that you can look at. Once you've gone through all the environmental site controls, then you can go to structural controls. If you can't do structural controls onsite, then there's a whole, kind of opens up enormous possibilities. Again, in some areas, there's more intention of this than there would be necessarily in the city of Tacoma Park. There could be- There could be stream restoration projects that you do in lieu of certain development rights. There could be, you know, funding towards public projects for infrastructure that, you know, would deal with the receiving end of this.
So the answer for do you have to do it onsite is yes, but no?
Yeah. You are expected to. If you can't, and you can prove why you can't based on limitations of the site, then you can move through a series of ranked.
Right. Now, as an example, if you had an acre of land, and it was all parking lot and high-rise, and you were going to refurbish the building, then you'd have to end up with half an acre of treated.
You would have to reduce the imperviousness by 50%. We've actually recently.
So let me just follow along my little scenario. So if there were 200 parking spaces in this acre of land, and you were going to reduce the impervious by 50% without going through any of the other steps, you might lose 100 parking spaces, which means then you can't use the building anymore because the parking requirements from zoning dictate that, so on, so forth. So that's the tension. That would seem to me to be the tension, would be the parking requirements, these would be in certain areas.
Well, there's a lot of alternatives there. For instance, with parking as an example, you can use pervious parking pavements.
Okay, so that's possible.
So there's abilities to maintain your parking quotient through other means, permeable pavers, porous concrete. In the case of a permit that we've just recently permitted, they went to a green roof. It was entirely.
Is a green roof, can a green roof then act as?
A green roof can serve as.
That was my second question. Thank you very much.
Yeah, yeah. So there's a number of measures that would not necessarily mean you have to shrink by half your.
I understand. You touched on it, and I appreciate that.
Thanks. Councilmember Clay?
So there's nothing, this is for Darryl, there's nothing about what we're doing here tonight, adopting the stormwater changes, that prevents us from considering any of the range of things that the Task Force on the environment might propose regarding stormwater or any changes to the stormwater ordinance. Is that correct?
You would have that flexibility.
The one, the multiple requirements, when the city makes an adjustment to its stormwater code, and I know we've done it at least once before, maybe twice before, is once the city makes a determination as to a direction they want to go, then we have to send it to the state, and they have to approve of it. And generally, as long as you're not weakening or reducing the level of management oversight or regulatory requirements, they don't have a problem with you strengthening the ordinance, provided that's what your jurisdiction wants to do. So it doesn't by any means make it impossible. It's a lengthy process, they don't move quickly. So once we go through the process here, then you have to go to the state, get the state's approval before it can be enacted.
How long does that take?
Months.
It really depends right now, because they're in a state of, you know, every jurisdiction in the state has to change its stormwater ordinance. So right now, you can barely get a call back in two weeks. Once this all settles out, I imagine we'll be back to a, you know, two-week to 30-day response frame.
And we have to have these done by May 4th?
We have to have it in effect implemented, though again, you know, there's the big unknown out here, which is if there is some legislation introduced, if the modifications that were worked out, negotiated between MEP and the other municipal organizations doesn't hold, I don't know what that means.
If I can just give a quick answer on that. My intent was to hold second reading after the legislature has adjourned, but before May 4th. And the.
The change is in.
And what happened was that there was an agreement hammered out, kind of put everybody in the room and lock the door and don't let them go to the bathroom, and it was environmentalists, developers, MDE, MML, Mako, and others, a group that is usually hard to get agreement with. It was hammered out, and the various powers that be in the legislature said, you will work this out, and you will work it out by X number of weeks from now. That happened. It was the hammered-out agreement, ready to implement, was then sent to the legislature to adopt, and they said no. So nobody knows where this is going to end up.
Excellent. Well, I'm glad you're so efficient. Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Wright?
More just a quick statement. Since this is only impacting new development, and since the, my main concern before was that the community on the environment was going to come up with some recommendations, and I think most of their recommendations have to do with existing development, and also learning recently that although they do have a set of preliminary recommendations, they haven't really been vetted by the whole group, and that we can choose to amend later, I would vote in favor of moving forward with what Darryl's brought to us.
Well, the ordinance, as we've redrafted it, addresses new development and redevelopment, so it can be existing development. The current standard in the city code, which predates this draft, is that if you have a residential development, you need to disturb 5,000 square feet in your limit of disturbance before it triggers the stormwater permits. So we've worked with that for a while now. We know what that is. If the council makes a decision to reduce the square footage of disturbance, that's certainly something that we don't have a concern about. We don't know what the immediate impact of that would be, but, so it affects both new development as well as redevelopment, once you reach that criteria. It affects all commercial, industrial, or institutional development, so regardless of size.
But it doesn't have an impact, we're not going to, for example, because of this, start to require people who aren't doing any development or redevelopment, that they have to change or do.
Yeah, this is definitely triggered by construction or work on the site.
I think a big chunk of the, not all of them, but a number of the things from the Task Force on the environment are connected more to, are there other things we could do to foster or get people to do things differently with their existing structure?
My understanding, there's a couple of interests, but certainly encouraging, incentivizing, and moving people forward to handling stormwater on their property is a big goal. I think they also have some recommendations in regard to code language.
Right, like the square foot of disturbance. Councilmember Schultz?
Is there any difference, any changes in what we're looking at tonight here with this first reading as from what we were looking at about three or four weeks ago when this first draft was shown to us?
It's identical to that.
It's identical.
Haven't made any changes.
I wanted to ask you if it's possible to, and this may not be, and it's just like a crazy question, and you can sort of demure from answering it, and that is, I'd like to sort of get an understanding of how this might apply to a real-world situation, and my warden thinking of the proposed Walgreens redevelopment, which is going to cover quite a bit of acreage, presumably if they put up a real store there. What would be different under this ordinance that that developer would be required to do that they wouldn't be doing prior to this ordinance?
Well, given that it would be a redevelopment rather than a new development, because there's existing buildings on the site, they would fall into the category of redevelopment within the code language. So that would trigger the increase in reduction of impervious area to 50% from 20, and then it would also put the priority on first looking at environmental site design. Interestingly enough, with Walgreens, we just went through a stormwater permitting process for them for one of their buildings, the one that Adupy Palace is in. I don't know if you're familiar with that site on University Boulevard?
Sure.
And they were very creative in the ways that they came up with. I mean, that is a site that's paved.
Oh, I know.
Entirely. And then there's buildings square in the middle of it, so you've got pretty much no green.
That's correct.
So they went with a green roof structure there. They are adding some infiltration chambers around the parking lot area in their landscape and gardening space, and they're using some innovative inlets, the Filterra-type of inlets where you actually have a tree or plant growing within the storm inlet itself, and they were able to get pretty close to that. Of course, they're going to be permitted in the old law versus the new law, but they went through some effort and intention to try to extend and expand what they would normally be doing. Our public works facility is also a facility that's largely paved. We went through the stormwater permit process for that. For us, though, we required our engineers to meet the proposed code as opposed to the previous code. So we did that through a series of infiltration chambers, and, because there, we can't really reduce any pavement, all the pavement we have is what we need. And then we're doing the rainwater harvesting, capturing of rainwater to use in toilet flush and watering nursery. It requires some innovative design, and it requires some real thought and intentionality as you're developing your project.
My reason for asking is that I just worry that if you get a big corporate developer like, say, Walgreens, and I'm not, don't mean to pick on them, you know, because for all I know, they may be extraordinarily cooperative and imaginative in their designs, it's just that sometimes you run up against people who've got their ways of doing things, and just are going to be hard-headed and resolute, trying to resist things here. But you're sounding like in this case, they were willing to work it out.
Yeah. Well, and interestingly, in the few permit applications that we've had since then, everyone's very aware of it in the architectural and development community. This has been a known thing since 2007, so people are aware of it, they're knowing what the requirements in the code is, they know what the technology is. It's been a growing field, the whole green development field.
But if this company gets permitted before this new ordinance takes effect, but then they don't get around to actually developing the site for a couple of years, there are still going to be.
They would still have their permit. We don't have anything that triggers, well, I couldn't say that. There may be an expiration date for a stormwater permit if they haven't done any construction that would then bring them back to the drawing board, and they'd be falling within the new requirements at that point.
I wonder if that might be a useful thing to have, an expiration date?
Yeah, I believe there is. I'll check and confirm.
And I'll just comment that because somebody might be hard-headed or resist doesn't mean we shouldn't do it. I'm thinking of certain political party and health care, health insurance reform. You have to just charge ahead and do it anyway. Any other questions? Is there any public comment on this first reading ordinance amending stormwater management code? Seeing none, will clerk please call a roll? No, just, we can do the ayes. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any nays? Passes unanimously. Gee, I don't usually go for a roll call in place of a regular one. It's usually the other way around. Next item is first reading ordinance amending the Title VI Housing, which is Landlord-Tenant Relations and Commission on Landlord-Tenant Affairs. And Sarah.
Look at caution in her face. She doesn't want to.
She's not sure she wants to come to the table on this.
Come on, we're not that bad.
I'm not sure you actually want to talk about this much longer, so.
No, I don't think we do. Does anybody want to talk about this?
Did you fix it?
We fixed it, and I can tell you that in about five short sentences.
Do that.
Okay. 48-hour written notice, except for an emergency. If the tenant decides that they don't want them to enter the unit, they can refuse, and the landlord has to go back. And if they go and do that for no reason at all, it would be considered unreasonable withholding of consent of access. But the way it's worded now, the tenant does not have to write down, yes, this 48-hour notice is appropriate, but they can at the last minute deny access to the unit for whatever reason, their child is ill, something tragic happened, and it's not appropriate to have the painters come in and go. You can go into the unit with less than 48-hour written notice if everybody agrees in writing. And if, for some reason, the tenant decides that, I don't want you in here tomorrow morning, they can withhold consent, and it will not ever be considered unreasonable because it's less than the 48-hour written notice. There were no questions about the subpoenas provisions from what I could tell, listening to the council meetings. And then as far as the punitive damages, Ken has left it at $400, up to $400 punitive damages that could be awarded to either the landlord or the tenant for either improperly entering a unit or refusing reasonable access to a unit. And then we'll come back, probably in May, and talk to you about fines. If it's more than five cents.
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Clay, seconded by Councilmember Siemens. Any questions?
I just got one.
No, I don't see any. I don't see any. Councilmember Wright?
I just have one question. I'm personally asking this on behalf of Councilmember Sniffer, because I know he had a concern about this. I just want to be clear. If they don't say anything, that is consent, correct?
With a 48-hour written notice.
With a 48-hour notice.
Right. If they do not say anything, and they haven't gotten 48-hour notice, say it's a 24-hour notice, then it's not permission, or not consent.
Councilmember Robinson?
And I just had a question. Thank you for the draft, what you did, I think it's great.
I will pass it on to Ken.
Great. And this is just, if it's deemed unreasonable, let's say Ken waits until hour 47 and then says, change my mind, change my mind, how is that, does then the landlord take the tenant to COLTA and say, look, this is unreasonable, and COLTA can agree, and then the fines can be imposed?
They're not, COLTA does not issue fines. COLTA issues what they call an opinion and order. So they rule in the favor of the landlord because the tenant at the very last minute, for the fourth time, said, no, you're not coming in. They can issue an opinion and order that says that the complaint that was filed by the landlord was appropriate, and that the tenant acted in error, and then they issue the order saying that the tenant owes the landlord up to $400 as punitive damages. If the tenant decided to appeal that, then they would go to court, and the court would make a decision to just affirm it again, or the city could issue a citation for failing to comply with the opinion and order, and there the fine is $1,000. But it's not issued by COLTA, it's issued by the city.
Okay, and then how about that poor landlord who's trying to get in and fix the faucet?
If the poor landlord cannot get into the unit because it's a licensing inspection, or it's something like that, and they get a fine from code enforcement, which can be $1,000 for not having.
I'm just, that's not the whole.
They could get their punitive damages, plus if there were actual damages, they could get that on top of it.
But the landlord just wants to go in and fix the faucet, that's all. The landlord just wants to go into the place and fix it.
As I know it can.
It's based on kind of fines, pressure through fines, then? Is that, that's how it seems like it's working?
Right, but the reality is, we usually negotiate this all out. It doesn't happen very often. The problem or the challenge is that when it does happen, everybody hears about it. So it sort of seems like it's this huge escalating problem. And yes, we're not aware of all the circumstances when landlords have entered illegally, or the tenants have erroneously.
Yeah, largely it's a non-issue, though.
It's an important issue if it affects you, but it's not something that happens 25 times a week or anything like that.
Okay, thanks a lot.
Councilwoman Siemens?
Thank you. I would just like to thank you and Mr. Sigmund for all of your work on drafting and redrafting this law, and I think we have made significant improvement to it. I would say that, again, reiterate that the Housing Department's perspective may be that this has not happened often, but I will say that many tenants don't go to the Housing Department with their concerns because of their fear of retaliation.
And I agree with you on that, and it's not just cases like this, it's illegal rent charges, it's a variety of other things. The challenge we have is it's difficult for us to act on something unless we're actually aware of it. So if something comes up like that, let us know, and we will do our best to negotiate it, so it's not a confrontational situation for the tenant and the landlord. Oftentimes, it's just people don't understand, or they're having a bad day, or they should talk to their wife instead of their husband, that kind of.
But the fear is of the retaliation. They know who reports it, such is the thing I was talking to you about a break, where there's a concern about illegal rent increase, that the tenant is fearful that if they were to come to the Housing Department directly, and then somehow they were identified to the landlord, that the problem may be resolved, however, the tenant may be removed.
Right. And not to belabor the point, a lot of times, we're able to finesse it so that it's not as obvious that it's the tenant that's actually filing the complaint that. as obvious that it's the tenant that's actually filing the complaint that we blame one of you guys or it's one of my staff members that's noticed this or something like that.
Blame me.
Your councilmember reported.
Mayor, how was it?
Yeah, he was in the building, he must have done it. Okay, any other questions? Any public comment on this? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at the consent agenda. We have a number of items on it. We have a single reading ordinance awarding a contract for stormwater project on Hancock and Sheridan, resolution recognizing Arbor Day, approving continuation of the Washington Admins Hospital Land Use Committee, resolution awarding small community grant funds, another one endorsing the Greater Washington 2050 Compact, another one providing for appointments to the Society Advisory Board, another one admitting the City Manager's Employment Agreement, and final one extending the term of task force environmental action. Would somebody like to move the consent agenda?
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Robinson, second by Councilmember Siemens. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, that's right. Now it's, I gotta call. See, I was on a roll. Will a clerk please call a roll?
Mayor Williams.
Aye.
Councilmember Wright.
Aye.
Councilmember Clay.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Snipper.
Councilmember Schultz.
Passes unanimously. I even had written roll call, but I wasn't looking at it. Okay. Now, we have our final item for the evening, which is a work session item with continued discussion of city lot and other Tacoma Junction issues. We have a couple people here who have given us something to chew over, which is in the packet. And it looks like they're a little bit shy about coming to the table, although Ms. Daniels-Cohen is not a shy person. Nobody coming to the table.
Which, which of those is shy?
I know. But they were kind of hesitant, looking around like, are you going up there or something? Now they're closely together, they're feeling, power the group.
Kay's looking for a two microphone situation.
She didn't have enough earlier in the evening, she's back for more.
The echo boom here. You can come up to Babu if you want. So, you want us to say something?
Sure.
Okay. Howard Cohen, Jefferson Avenue. And back in December, when Savory closed, a group of us decided to get together to talk about not only Savory, but all the problems of the Tacoma Junction that go back years, even decades. And so we've met informally four times. And a couple of positive things have happened since then. One, of course, is that Savory's no longer closed, or is about to reopen. Very positive. And also, a large number of folks have joined our group, also very positive. But the fundamental problems, of course, remain, that being traffic and sort of the difficulties of creating a good business environment at the junction. And at this point, or at this junction, juncture, I guess, we would like to suggest to the council that a more formal and official task force be appointed to deal with five issues that we identified at our last meeting. I can read them for the record. And of course, the city has a huge stake in this, starting with item number one, which is the disposition of the city lots, which open up in the next few months after the firehouse is completed. Two is the traffic, what we call the traffic dysfunction, and fixing that. And that, of course, requires dealing with the State Highway Administration. And it strikes us that it's going to take a united front from citizens, council, and staff to deal effectively with that group. And probably will need some help from our District 20 folks. Number three, business and economic revitalization. And here, we're talking about something long-term. Although, you know, in the last few months, we've seen a turnaround happen up and down Carroll Avenue. So that's exciting.
With particular thanks to Roz Grigsby.
Well, where is she? Oh, my goodness.
The council got blamed for it. I didn't see why we didn't get credit for it then.
That's true. Never lie.
Just kidding. I'm just kidding. There's plenty of credit to share.
There's plenty of credit. I was at the award, at a meeting for the nominees of the Azalea Awards last night, and we had this big discussion about Roz, whether she could be an official nominee again since she wins it practically every year. Sort of like Meryl Streep in the Academy Awards. So, yeah.
Sort of.
Okay. Sort of.
So Meryl Streep keeps getting nominated, but she don't always win.
That's right.
She makes about the same amount of day bills as...
Yes, pretty much. I've always thought of them in the same category.
And number four is parking.
Parking, yes. And we talked last time about, you know, to start with, putting a sign up at the city lot that says parking, public parking. But there's the whole question of maintaining the right ratio of parking to make the businesses function well. And then quality of life there, which has to do with everything from pedestrian safety to just a way of feeling that this is a place you'd like to go to rather than avoid. So those are the points we wanted to bring to you. And did you want to say anything?
Did you want to say a little something about the language here about city staff resources that you all thought might be appropriate?
Yes.
Just because the way it's written may not be the way it, my sense of the discussion, where it's talking about some city staff as appropriate. Want me to take a stab at this one?
Go ahead.
My sense of the discussion in the group was that it felt like there was a lot you could do. There were times that coordination with the city staff was appropriate, but that you weren't looking for, say, constant support, constant attendance. That you were looking for a number of things that the task force could do and continue to do and call on staff as required and coordinate so that if staff felt that there was something that they needed to bring to the task force's attention, that staff could do that, but that you weren't looking for a heavy dose of staff resources that may or may not be there, given budget constraints.
I think that hits it on the head, yes.
So in case anybody was interpreting it as, oh gee, this was going to require a lot of staff work, hopefully that's not the case.
I think that the most immediate and time-consuming part will be dealing with the State Highway Administration. I think staff can judge that better than we as to how much that will, how much time and effort that will require.
So are there questions that the council has about this? Councilmember Robinson.
I just want to say that at the MML dinner with the county council last week, there was a presentation about traffic calming options that the county is looking at. And apparently, there are no more speed bumps in the county. They're all now speed humps, just to get, make it completely confusing is the wording of all this. But there's a new kind of traffic calming item, and it's called a speed lump. And a speed lump is, I'm not kidding, this is absolutely honest-to-God truth. A speed lump is a lump that is wider than a car's tires, so you can't drive over it, but narrower than a fire engine's tires, so a fire engine can drive over it. So I just want to throw that out there.
A foreshortened speed lump.
Let's say, or it could be considered a mini traffic circle. If there was one in the middle of the junction, which forced people to go around it, except for fire engines, which could go right across it. So I just want to throw that out there. That's one of those county ideas that has been presented and is being considered at the county level.
California, we call that a curb. In the middle of the road.
A mountable curb.
In the middle of the road.
That's pretty funny.
And it was also pointed out that if they were adopted, it would be in the county and that it wouldn't be on state highway and that it wouldn't be on local roads managed by municipalities unless we wanted to. But if they go through with those changes, it would be on the rest of the county.
Kind of like a traffic circle without a traffic circle. Think of it.
Questions, observations? Councilmember Clay.
I can't imagine developing a group that works on Tacoma Junction issues that doesn't have copious amounts of staff support and support, quite frankly. I don't know what the city manager thinks, but, I mean, we're talking about economic development, land use, coordinating with the state and the county, not ever pleasant things to do. The worst traffic glitch nightmare that I know of in the whole, like, surrounding area of places that I go through, and I don't think that we're, I don't think we're going to be able to do it without an expectation that we should have significant staff support, which isn't to say that I don't think that we could, if we wanted to do it, we couldn't figure out how we were going to do that. But I don't think that it's a reasonable assumption that we're not going to need significant staff or, and outreach, you know, conducting outreach to make sure that everybody knows about the process and feels like they're a part of it. So that's my thought on the staff support. I agree that we need to have a committee, and I have thought that for a while. I've been a little bit, I get a little bit concerned, this isn't particular to the fireplace, but I get a little bit concerned when we have committees that get rolling and then we have as many as three council members attending the committee, so we're just short of a quorum and rotating through. I'm always concerned because I get concerned that people in the community who participate in those committees get a sense that the council as a whole is with the different things, you know, supports the different things that have been discussed, when sometimes the rest of the council doesn't necessarily know what's going on. And I also get concerned that even if the people in the committee get that and take time to explain it, that people outside of the committee don't understand that. And that's why I really think it's important at this time that it become a committee of the council. I think that it's important that the council set an agenda for the committee. The things that are listed here are certainly all things that we want to look at, you know, economic development, land use, the transportation factors, maybe even housing, and, you know, how those things fit into our strategic plan, how we might fund any of the things. Another issue around staff, you know, what are the potential funding costs of different things that we do? When I was in college, we ran this fun simulation game that was put together, I think it was the Lincoln Land Use Institute, maybe you know about this, being a planner. They had a game that you'd play with high school kids. And they would develop something, they'd pick a spot and they'd develop something in their town and they had to write their own pro forma, and it said, this is how much this parking space costs. And so you had these worksheets that you'd fill out. And so you decide what it was you were going to do in your development, and then they'd give you the worksheet and you'd fill it out. So, you know, maybe we could do something like that. So as people come up with different ideas, people could sort of sketch out what their costs are. But we need to know, when we're talking about things too, kind of what are the realistic costs and how does this ripple through our tax base or our budget or, you know, those kinds of things. And then the last thing that I'm going to say is that I think that the, we should really talk about what the structure of the committee looks like so that it's representative of the different areas of the city. And so I think we should talk about whether or not we want to do seats by ward, you know, who would we want to make sure we always had representation from? We want to always have representation from that old Tacoma Business Association? And, you know, do we want to have a seat for the three businesses, like, you know, from one, one from each sort of little section of the, or two businesses, I don't know how many sections we would consider we have, they're sort of the co-op. And then there's the, down to where the cat and dog, where I take my cat and my dog, the veterinarian, and then some of the places up between the gas station, which is kind of like three little blocks essentially. I don't know, but I think we should talk about what that looks like so we get good representation. And then to have that, how big does the committee become and is it unwieldy? And I think we also might consider looking at what we did with the hospital, which was we split out land use and health services. Is there a difference between the people who are interested in some of the long-term community development stuff, like the traffic and the land use and the long-term economic development? And then it seems like there are other shorter-term livability, there's a lot of little shorter-term livability things that could go. And I don't know if that's a function of what the OTBA does now ordinarily, or could we sort of use more input on a subset of that? But I think all of that would also be worth talking about. Thank you.
And I just wanted to, in a second, Councilmember Schultz, just wanted to make sure that we also talk a little bit about the recommendation for it being a task force as opposed to a committee. And maybe you all want to just say something real quick about that.
The distinction between a committee and a task force is, we understand it, is that committee goes on forever, I guess, and that a task force has a specific agenda and a deadline and tries to get something to happen in a set period of time.
And a sunset.
And a sunset.
And I think the discussion was, set period of time initially to be one year, and correct me if I'm wrong, with like 30 to 90 days reporting back to the council and/or the council reporting back to the task force. So we could, my attitude is, I want the biggest bang for the buck. I want something that's going to function and really dig in and make this happen because at the last meeting, someone said that junction's never worked. Well, I happen to know that it has because I've lived here when it did work. And I don't know what happened and I don't know when it happened and what caused it to not be working. Maybe it just life happened and it kind of got swept off to the side. But I know it can work again, based on just the art hop. This past weekend, I didn't see a whole lot of you hopping down at the junction, but that's all right.
My kids were there.
You were hopping up at the other, at Old Tacoma, but there were probably at least 100-plus people, maybe closer to 150, that stopped by where I was and I got a chance to talk to. And many of them, at least half of them, were not from Tacoma Park. They're from Silver Spring. And so whatever happened with that function, and here we go again, hats off to Roz and Bobby Kittenner.
Bobby Kittenner.
Yeah, for even coming up with an idea that would drive people into businesses, not let them just walk by, but drive them, have them come into the business to see what the business was about. That was really terrifically exciting, especially since, of course, everyone goes to the co-op, but it was two other smaller businesses on the other side of the street where they came and actually purchased product, saw what was going on and either liked it or didn't, I don't know. But it was a really, really, an injection of excitement for the junction, for sure, because I was there.
Councilmember Schultz.
Yeah, I'd like to just make some observations. I took some time this past week, one sunny middle of the day, to go down there and stand at the intersection on various corners of that complex intersection. There's more corners there than, I don't know what. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of corner, little pointy things. To observe the traffic, how it flowed or didn't, to examine, you know, to measure the... the traffic light sequences, and just sort of, to sort of soak up, you know, get the feel of what was going on, car-wise and pedestrian-wise. And it wasn't, it's not like you need to have a PhD in anything to be able to get some impressions pretty quick. For example, I noticed that the traffic traveling westbound on Ethan Allen Avenue, it stops at the light there at, Sycamore, thank you, slipped my mind. Had to wait a minute and 20 seconds for the light to turn green, at least the first car in line did. But then when it turned green, it lasted 33 seconds. So, and of course, this was the middle of the day, so there was no line of cars, just maybe a half a dozen. They all made it through. But obviously, in a rush hour or heavier flow, they're not going to make it through. It's just going to sit there and clog up. Sycamore had a 20-second green, whether there was any cars at that waiting to go through or not. Usually it was just one, sometimes two. Coming the other direction on Carroll Avenue, it was completely different, much more green for them. But in the middle of all this, there was a lot of dead time where nobody had any green. So you would think, well, this would be the time when all the pedestrians would be rushing across, except that there weren't any. I think I counted two that wanted to cross Carroll Avenue in the 30 or so minutes that I was standing there. That isn't to say that there's not a problem, and in fact, what you might be able to say is that if you had good pedestrian crossing, safe, clear, that you would have more pedestrian traffic trying to go back and forth. Another observation was that having parked in the lot between the temporary firehouse and the co-op, it was really difficult to get out of the parking lot into the flow of traffic, because there's no indicator there. You just sort of close your eyes and hit the accelerator and just hope that you've got a clear spot. I'm exaggerating a little bit, but, and then I thought, you know, wouldn't it be interesting if there was a circle there, so that you didn't have any traffic lights at all? And of course, I understand that the idea of a traffic circle or a lump, as Councilmember Robinson instructed us, or something there. Now, I understand that the state created a concept plan some years ago on how that might work, and that it was met with a lot of opposition. But that was then, this is now, and I think that that's something that needs, I would hope that this task force would, you know, take a look at again, because it just seemed to me that there's an awful lot of traffic that was sitting, and nothing was happening. And I'm thinking that if I'm a developer, and I'm thinking about developing that vacant lot, that would be in a way that the community would like to have it developed, you know, historically appropriate and all that, such that it may even produce some taxes coming into the coffers. It sure would be nice if there was a decent traffic flow, so that vehicles and pedestrians could access my development, whether it's for whatever purposes that are there. Because right now, if I'm a developer, I'm looking at that, I'm thinking, how the heck is anybody going to be able to even get into this place or out of it in a comfortable, assured sort of way? So you just go, and you just go in, and you don't, a circle would enable that, because you just swing around and you go right through, as traffic always permits in a circle. I'm not here to say that I want you to approve this, that, I'm not here to, all I'm doing is making an observation, feeding the kitty, so to speak. I just think that there's a lot of potential there, as you do. I think it's an important intersection for the whole city. I realize it's most important that the people have to deal with it every day, because you live near, then closer than some, but it is a critical intersection to the whole city of Tacoma Park. So I really favor the idea of this task force, and want to support you to make it work.
My sense is that there's a lot of people who feel that this is a critical time to address issues in the junction, and that there's a lot of people who are interested in working on it, and that we ought to move forward and make it a regularized task force, make sure that everybody knows about it, people have the chance to be involved. There's always a chance that somebody's going to say, I didn't know, and come back, but at least if we're, we have a public process and a call for people who want to be involved, that this is a chance to do that, and we can take advantage of a lot of expertise and energy that the people who have been involved so far seem willing to continue to put into this. Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you all for the time that you've put into this already. Certainly support the task force. I think I like that approach, we've seen it in the environment. And I am optimistic that task forces work better than just standing committees. I think one of the approaches that the council used with the task force on the environment is, you know, to set specific goals of deliverables, what we want to see accomplished by the end of the task force. I know you mentioned five, you know, areas that could be addressed, but I wondered if it makes sense for your working group to go back and maybe come back to the council with recommendations for deliverables for a task force.
I think that's a good idea, I think, because we could presumably have another meeting before anything gets rolling officially anyway.
Okay, and the other thing that I think the council would appreciate help with is, how long you think it would take to do some of these things? Because we do, I do think it's important for the council to set the goals of what we want to see and when we want to see it, because I think that helps to motivate people to get things done.
But as Kay mentioned, we thought a year time limit, and that we would report to you at least quarterly.
I guess what I'm thinking is, a little bit finer than that, maybe some deliverables along the way.
Sure, no, I understand, so we would, so those quarterly reports would include deliverables, rather than just this nice conversation we continue to have.
Exactly.
Councilmember Clay.
I just want to say, I want to make sure that we have a council-driven process also, and that the council's bought into what it is that we actually end up putting in our structure and our resolution for the task force. We've already seen what happens when the council has, you know, committees. We have committees that sort of go on, and we don't have a very strong connection to them, and the council hasn't actually driven the agenda. So I hope that we'll all engage this, so that we can be sure that we have a council-driven agenda on the task force.
To be frank, that's why we're here tonight. We've been meeting for months, and we've had this conversation almost every meeting about, at what point do we need to have the legitimacy that a council-appointed task force gives us in order to be trying to work with state highway, or trying to work with county, or whatever, and at what point do we need council to say, yes, this is the direction we agree is useful to go, and we want to go there together.
Well, there's council legitimacy, and I think legitimacy, and then I think there's community legitimacy, which is part about diversifying who the people are that participate in the group, which hopefully would be something that the council could bring. Like, I already know two people from my ward that would like to participate in a council task force on the junction, but aren't as excited about going to an informal fireplace group, for example.
There've been, I don't know, probably 12 or 15 people generally.
And just two years ago, SS Carroll started a committee, Make the Junction Function, because we knew that the firehouse was going to go into restoration, and it was, you know, we knew two years was a good lead-in to make some changes. And we've been there and done that, marking down how the lights change, and that was our first, it's really-
I'm not at all surprised.
A really fun thing to do, but we've come up, basically, we had the same kinds of ideas. As a little committee from a little, you know, neighborhood association, we had no power. We tried to get ahold of the state highway administration, and they just kind of batted us away a little bit. So, didn't hurt our feelings, we just kept, so, pressing forward, but that's why it's important, it's about the backing of the city, and so that we can really make this happen, because it's been a whole lot of make this happen that hasn't happened yet with this junction. And life is getting shorter for me, and I want to see it happen, so I'm in here.
Councilmember Ross.
First of all, I don't, in my enthusiasm for the range of traffic calming options at the county, I don't want to put it out there that I think a speed lump is one, is a good thing or a bad thing, I just wanted to inform that this, I was intrigued by it.
It's a funny thing, that's why it is.
That's right. So we shouldn't start calling them the Robinson lump?
No, don't call it the Robinson lump. There was one other piece that I think that we all on the council need to be concerned about, perhaps, and you as well, concerned about, and that is, how will you deal with the city's ownership of that lot as we all try to approach development of that lot? If that's the direction that we go? I mean, it could be developed, it could not be developed, but we own, the city itself owns that lot, so that will be a sticky wicket, you might say. Maybe it'll turn out to be that much easier, because we have control, but at the same time, I suspect there'll be some difficulties because we own it, because we own it. So that was my only other point.
So maybe I can suggest that the council wants to put together a task force, we'll work with the clerk to do what we need to do to do that. We welcome input from the group that's been meeting about any other ideas, any deliverables, any sense of timeframe, get that to us, and we'll take that into the mix of what we put together. The clerk has given me a look that says she wants to say something.
I'm wondering, is it premature to put a notice in the newsletter?
Right, it's going to be a little difficult without the scope, but I could probably put some kind of general paragraph in.
Some general notification would be good with details to follow, and we'll put this together as soon as we can, but we know we have some process that we've got to follow.
Mayor.
Yes.
Because as we all know, this is a difficult economic times, and staff time is a precious commodity. We talked on the cover sheet about the need to think about resources. It might be helpful for the working group to also get some recommendations on what resources might be needed, and I would say with the emphasis on minimizing those resources.
And also, any sense that you all have of any community resources that might be available on a voluntary basis? I know that in past iterations of groups about the junction, there has been a lot of professional expertise that's been brought to bear, and this is a great time to be leveraging that, so. Any database that you all know of, you know, even if it's just a list of some people or some ideas for, even if there aren't people who have that expertise, that if we can put out there, that there are certain types of things that might be valuable. So if councilmembers know of anything, that, you know, planners or architects, or whatever it might be, then if people see that in an announcement in the newsletter, they could go, oh, well, you know, if it means committing X amount of time, I have that expertise, I'd be interested, I could volunteer. So it's some targeted marketing for those who might be interested as well. Other thoughts, comments?
Holly's got her hat on, she's ready to rock.
I stayed till 10:15.
Anything else that city manager or the clerk needs on this item? Got what we need? That's it? Do you, so?
Meeting's over.
Okay. Last comment.
Jesse, do you want names? You want people to send you their names at this point?
It doesn't, sure, I'll send out applications to anyone who's, I've already, three or four people have already-
Right, that's why, that's why I asked.
I was going to go home.
It doesn't hurt, I'll send out applications, but I'm sure the council will review all the applications.
No, I understand, yeah, right, of course, I just wanted to know if you, if the question is going to arise, I'm sure, so I just wanted to know if I should say, or we should say yes. Go ahead.
That's good.
Okay. Thanks. Thank all of you for your efforts so far, others who are here as well, who were-
Glad you're here.
The general manager of the co-op, and residents from the area. It's very helpful. Your turn.